Good evening and welcome to the February 21st Village of Woodbury Planning Board Meeting. I ask that please rise and close your knees.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a true republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please sit. All right, again, you are at the February 21st Village of Woodbury Planning Board Meeting. All right, has the board had a chance to review the minutes from 2:07?
Yes.
All right, I'll offer a motion to accept those minutes.
I'll second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Stay in those here.
You can still vote if you read them.
I read them and I'll vote aye.
Okay, very good. All right, I'm going to offer a motion after reviewing the 117 minutes. There were a few minor changes to those. I sent them to you, Claudia?
No.
Okay, I'll resend them to you. So on page five, the language type two should be deleted. It was an unlisted action. It's not an unlisted type two. And then also on page five, the first sentence of the last paragraph for the project should be revised to read, "The board determined that it would not take action this evening, recognizing that is required to take action within 62 days of the close of the public hearing." So I'll offer a motion to amend the January 17 meeting.
Second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll email to you, Claudia, all right? All right. One other housekeeping item is that we did back in January talk about Timber Trail and this board did talk about, did have a discussion about denial of that application. Counsel wasn't here. We had substitute counsel that night. He held off to make a decision. I'm going to authorize, make a motion to authorize counsel draft, a draft resolution of denial for the Timber Ridge application consistent with the discussion of that evening.
I'll second.
Second? Any question? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Housekeeping items done for the night. CVPM has requested to be moved to the next meeting. Their lawyer couldn't make it tonight. So review and discuss revised documents submitted for the reconstruction of a single-family dwelling within existing footprint. Said property is located at 20 Blueberry Lane in Highland Mills and is known as the Village of Woodbury Tax Map, Section 217, Block 2, Lot 3. This is for 20 Blueberries. Stein Ideal Design. Good evening, sir.
Hi, good evening. My name is Yitzchak Stein, Ideal Design. Came to represent my client, 20 Blueberry, for the reconstruction of his house. We submitted, requested updates.
Yes.
Which included the bulk and some updated numbers.
Yep, now we're here. All right, so we've gotten that. Jim?
Okay, thank.
At least they got your name right tonight.
Jeff, Jim. I'll go by phone, that's okay. We had previously, when the applicant had gotten some variances for the site, we had requested that a bulk table for the plot plan demonstrating the permitted variances and compliance be included and for coverage and height. This still remains outstanding, so this should be a plan revision. On the accessory structure or structures, one shed is in the side yard and this, the, also there's another structure that is within six feet. The one shed is 3.6 feet from the property line. As the board and the applicant discussed the previous meeting, the removal of the nonconforming shed could be a requirement prior to certificate of occupancy. We recommend that you memorialize this as a condition of your approval. Non-reflective windows are a requirement of the code. The applicant should demonstrate compliance by adding a note to the plan. Per typical practice, we recommend that this requirement be included as a condition of any action you take. Under encroachments, there are a number of encroachments on adjacent parcels due to existing fencing. We recommend that the planning board does not approve the use or of or the location of these encroachments, and we recommend this be reviewed with counsel or included as a condition. And that's it.
Any questions for Jim? Any questions at all on the application?
I have one for the, I just want to clarify. You say two or three sheds. There are three sheds, correct? According to, I just.
There are a couple of sheds, but only two of them make the problem. One of them because it's in the front. It's not in the back of the building. It should be in the back. And one of them because it's very close to the lot line.
Okay, so there's three. I did a site visit today and I got pictures of three, plus there's a gazebo in the middle. Is the gazebo staying or going? If you want to take a look.
Oh, it's next to the pool.
Right in front of the shed.
Actually, it shows four sheds.
It's a gazebo, I call it a gazebo.
Yeah, do you want to see the plan? It's on page two.
Is that staying?
Yeah, that's staying, yes. The pool is not being touched.
Okay, and then the shed in the rear, that's close to the property line, is a 20-foot fence in the backyard, homemade. I'm not sure if that's going or. Yeah, that fence is about two feet from the shed and it goes all the way down the property line. So I just want to know, is that staying or going? I mean, it's.
Well, we're not going to approve it, so it will, we'll work the, we'll add a condition into the resolution that we're not approving.
Okay.
The fence.
Okay.
That they can work out with.
Yeah, it's your call, actually. I mean.
Well, I can't, we can't approve a fence that's not legal.
I understand, so you put an offer that it needs to be done, I mean.
Yeah.
Okay.
I guess.
Well, I'm saying, we're going to, we'll just put a note in the resolution that you'll have to work that out with.
Yeah, that makes sense.
The building inspector when they come out to.
No fencing is being approved as part of this application.
There you go. Perfect.
I just typed it in.
Exactly.
I'm good.
All right, any other questions or concerns?
Nope.
And we actually happen to have a draft resolution for this one. Is everybody okay if I go ahead with that?
Please.
All right, so several pages of facts and findings. The applicant has provided proof to, the applicant has provided proof that the property had a municipal water connection in place on July 30th, 2021, to the Building Department, Water Department, and Village Engineer. On February 21st, 2024, the Planning Department, in conclusion with the Village Engineer, that the applicant has demonstrated there is no increase in the use of water associated with the approval of this application and therefore is exempt from the current moratorium on land development approvals. See Local Law 5 of 2022, exemption number 12. Then we get into the fund. All right. Specific conditions. Stop scrolling. No building permit shall be issued authorizing construction of structures inconsistent with the architectural rendering submitted to and approved by the Architecture Review Board as part of this approval, nor shall any certificate of occupancy issued for any structures constructed except in conformance with such renderings. Any deviation from such renderings will require further planning board review. All new windows shall be constructed of or coated with non-reflective material. Anti-reflection window film will be applied to any low-e windows installed. Prior to the signing of the renderings, the applicant shall comply with the memorandum of the Village Engineer dated February 16th, 2024, to the satisfaction of Village Engineer. All encroachments onto adjacent properties shall be removed prior to an issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall remove all nonconforming sheds from the property, with a footnote. The approval is additionally conditioned upon the applicant delivering prior to the issuance of any building permit, proof that the copy of the final approved plans had been filed with the Orange County Department of Public Works, or proof that such filing is not required. And we will add number seven, that no fencing is being approved with this application. Good with you, Kelly?
That would, yes. I just moved it up to number five because the spacing made it better, but yes. Sorry.
Okay. Any questions on the draft resolution as read? I'll offer a motion to accept the draft resolution with amendment. Second, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Good night.
Rushmore State, review and discuss review, revised documents submitted for amended site plan, special permit for proposed event venue. Said property is located 14 Castleton Road in Highland Mills, known as the Village of Woodbury Tax Map, Section 202, Block 1, Lot 70. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. George Lithgow, J&amp;G Law, for the applicant. We're pleased to appear before you for the third time. With me is the applicant, as well as Larry Toro, Civil Tech Engineering. So I think most of the issues that were raised in the engineer's memo have, well, all of the issues have been addressed. I think they have been satisfactorily addressed. There were comments from your traffic engineer primarily concerning the need for a traffic plan.
Mm-hmm.
We have provided that. Mr. Greeley has issued a letter indicating that's acceptable. There was one comment from the fire department that we did address, but in a, I guess, slightly different way than what the fire department contemplated. And that was a need for emergency egress from the back lot, the valet lot. If you look at Section 3.2 of the traffic plan, what we proposed, and we haven't had confirmation from the fire department yet, is that the onsite personnel will be directed to assemble the guests in a safe place and then proceed according to direction from the fire department based on the nature of the event and the access. Because otherwise, you're sending people to get cars where they don't know where they're parked, or you're taking people three by three in a golf cart to go back there and try the car out. And we think it's better control and safer for everyone concerned if there's a safe place for them to remain until the emergency responders arrive and then whoever's in charge of that event, we give direction to the onsite staff for whatever needs to be done. So that is a departure from what I think the fire department was envisioning. We've reached out to them, haven't heard back yet, but what we're here for tonight is primarily to give you an opportunity to review the comments from your engineer and determine whether this is ready for public hearing, and we'll certainly have a response before then. So I'm going to let Larry address any questions about the civil tech response to the engineer comments. As I said, I think the traffic engineer is satisfied.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Larry Toro, Civil Tech Engineering. Basically, I think we've addressed them, as George has stated, but if there's anything in particular that still needs to be looked at or discussed or you need answers to them, see if I can assist in that.
Jim?
Okay, under the site plan, the access, the code requires the site have at least two egress or adgress, adgress emergency because the term of this land including consultation emergency response. And the first point is off Castle Drive. The second driveway is off Castle Drive, is finished, is finished with pavers and then wraps around the perimeter of the structure lead to both apartments. This is denoted as the primary ESO access. The third driveway is, is also isolated. It will not serve as a point of egress or ingress for, for ESOs. The ESOs respond to the applicant's plan, taking no exception. However, the fire department did emphasize the maintenance, maintaining clear access to which driveway surfaces for all required fire apparatuses during events. The applicant also provided a traffic and parking management plan. We recommend that the plan clearly specifies that all emergency access egress must take place to the primary finished gravel driveway located off of Castle Drive. Buffers, under buffers, it appears the site is adequately buffered. We recommend you consider additional buffering if you may need appropriate. The lighting, if warranted, you may consider the potential condition requiring exterior lighting to be shielded as to not directly shine upon adjoining residential properties. And we have no recommendation on the hours of operation. The applicant's confirmed compliance with the code. We recommend that you, that the compliance with the hours of operation are a condition of any action you make there. And we have, under potential actions, we have food service. These are traditional codes. Insurance and permits for catering and alcohol beverages are required to be submitted to the village department prior to the event taking place. Public safety plan, the code requires a public safety plan to be submitted to the code enforcement officer prior to certificate of occupancy. Uniform code, the code requires evaluation of compliance to uniform code to be prepared by design professionals submitted to the code enforcement officer prior to certificate of occupancy. And temporary structures, temporary structure must be, must comply with requirements of the code respectively, code enforcement officer prior to event taking place.
You have questions for Jim?
No.
As far as the renewal that you're saying that we should discuss, is that like a yearly or how we set it up to see how things are going with it or?
As far as, I missed the first part of your question.
The renewal, now, Section 8, 3E, says renewal. That's saying that we should review this at a certain time interval?
At a certain time interval, it's usually a year after it's issued. You want to make sure if there's any complaints, they're addressed, things like that.
Now, does that go every single year if we do that? Or is that something that would be changed after the first review?
Usually it goes every year and then, but they may not be required to come to you. So if there's no problems and everything's operating, great.
Okay.
But if they get a complaint, then you're probably going to, it's either going to be resolved or they're going to be called back in to try and mitigate whatever that issue is.
Okay, and they'd have to be formal complaints, right? They would have to be formal complaints?
Yes, not just a conversation on the street. It should be filed, and they have to be founded as well. So, you know, the, the building inspector would have to investigate it, make sure that a complaint actually exists and that there was a problem to fix that.
That's all I have.
Yes, I just have one.
Yep.
On the number of attendees, the code says 199. That includes the employees, correct? Or is it an addition to?
I doubt that was an addition to. I think that's an addition because we provided additional parking.
Yeah, if you look at the parking, it's 199 plus 20 employees.
Plus 20, okay.
So the code says that the term attendees is exclusive of any employees or staff managing and or serving the event.
Okay.
Any other questions?
The event of snow removal, will be taking up any parking spots where they're, where you push the snow?
No, there's, there's plenty of room on site that.
I'm good.
Yep, that's it. Any else? Any else? Phil did give us a report. He's got a conflict, so he can't get here tonight. Basically, his was just about the traffic management program or policy procedures for the event. We will formally make a referral to fire to have them comment on the change language and make sure it's acceptable to them. And that's all he had. He said everything else has been worked out. Kelly?
I just had one thing, and I know I had mentioned it to their council previously, but the village is still under a moratorium, so I know that they want to move this application forward. So I think they need to either determine whether or not this project falls into an exemption or request a waiver from the Board of Trustees, and I would suggest they put that request in or figure out that exemption sooner rather than later, so that's not just hanging out there.
That'd be on the applicant to take up. Of course, we can't take any action.
As I say.
We just can't take action until that's clarified, one, either, either way or the other.
Can we do a public hearing?
Yeah, we can do a public hearing.
Yeah.
Well, first, I'm going to offer a motion to refer the traffic management plan to fire, well, to all ESOs, but it's really fire. We need to have them be okay with the language.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and also offer a motion, our next regularly scheduled meeting is the 21st of March, so I will offer a motion to schedule a public hearing for the 21st of March.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Don't go too far, George. All right.
Mine's actually gone.
Woodbury Common, Bold Scene and Company, discuss review of documents submitted for amended site plan, special permit, and ARB for proposed kiosk with outdoor seating area. Said property is located on Woodbury Common property off Route 32 in Central Valley and is known as the Village of Woodbury Tax Map, Section 225, Lot 1, Lot 70, dot 2. Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Happy New Year. We were last before the board back in 2023 of August. Just to refresh the board's memory, we're seeking site plan approval, special permit, and ARB approval for the proposed kiosk for tenant Bold Scene and Company to operate a champagne bar. Since our last appearance, we prepared a response letter to the initial Village Engineer's report dated August 10th to address items raised in their initial report. We recently received an additional review from the Village Engineer dated February 16th addressing our comments. We also provided some documentation as to state licker authority application and lease provisions with respect to assignment and the tenant. That was requested by your Village Attorney, which I forwarded to her as well. I do have with me this evening Dave Mistrada, General Manager of the Commons, if there's any questions of him. And I believe we addressed most of the comments of the Village Engineer, but I leave that up to the board to make that determination.
Questions for the applicant? No? Jim? Okay.
I heard you tap.
Okay, under the review of site plan, circulation for the ESOs, as with other similar applications in the Commons.
The Commons and the ESOs should be solicited for confirmation of usual access to existing water fronts impacted by this work proposal. Pedestrian circulation, safety due to high pedestrian foot traffic. At the Commons, we recommend the app can be required to construct added barricades to separate structures almost from the public. Although this, we recommend that your action included with all appropriate safety measures be provided to this head patch of the building. Under the trash refuse, the applicant states disposal recycling are built by nearby service courts in their neighborhood. We recommend your action included with forceful plans to follow these guidelines. On the landscaping, we recommend we consider whether the landscaping follows the streets and steps back. And Seeker, we recommend you affirm counsel that your products are of action included.
Yeah, I didn't have that they did that yet.
Questions for Jim? Kelly, anything?
Yes, so from my notes, this, the board didn't make the determination to reaffirm Seeker yet, so Seeker still does need to be addressed. You got the GML back, that was local determination, and I don't know if you've referred this to the ESOs yet, but if not, you might want to do that and get that ball rolling.
Question with, if we do go forward with an approval for this and allow for cooking facilities in this kiosk, does it now go for all kiosks?
Depending if those, if the situations are similar. So we do try and uniquely tailor it for the particular application, but it's possible that another kiosk could come in and ask for a cooking facility inside.
Okay. Questions for Kelly? No? Rich?
I'm good.
You're good? Tommy, you're good, or?
So previously, we were not allowed in cooking in any kiosks, correct?
Inside, no.
Inside, inside cooking.
So this wouldn't be setting a?
Oh, it is, kind of.
Yeah, right? That, I think I might have issued.
You don't have to think about that tonight. That's why I raised it, that's why I raised the question, because we still got to go through a public hearing and stuff.
Yeah.
But other than that?
Other than that, I'm okay.
Okay. All right. So I'll offer a motion to review the, refer the plans to ESO for comment and review.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I will also offer a motion to schedule a public hearing for the 21st of March, which is our next scheduled public hearing, meeting?
I'll second.
Second, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
And then, if we reaffirm Seeker, we're not automatically going with the cook, allowing the cooking, right? We still? No, right?
You're still considering it.
Still considering.
You're just saying that the, that the application is consistent with the findings from the prior big study.
The big, yes, the big study. Okay, good. All right, so I will offer a motion to reaffirm the secret findings for this application.
Second.
Second, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we'll see you on the 21st.
Sounds good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You too. All right, before I forget, because I'm getting old, I'm not forgetting about you, George. Pine Ridge Estates, they were scheduled to be on the agenda tonight. They did only have an extension until tonight. They can't make it. Everybody apparently is out of town, so I'm going to say that we give them a 30-day extension on the advice of counsel for them to come in on the 21st.
Counsel's playing nicely.
Yes, and explain to us why they haven't in two years been able to move the project forward. So I will offer a motion for an extension for Pine Ridge Estates to the 21st.
I'll second.
Second, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, and the last, but certainly not least, senior housing. What's up?
Point of information, the next March, April 3rd, or say March, the 20th or something.
Is it?
It is. I will change all of those to 20.
It is the 20th, so we're just going to amend all my motions for the 20th.
Sorry, I thought Ash went.
And George will be sending you a bill.
Delete, 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 delete.
Do I have to remake all the motions? All right, so I'm going to offer a motion to reschedule all public hearings that we scheduled for the 21st to the 20th.
A second.
How about that? Okay, any questions?
I really thought it was the 21st, otherwise I would have.
So did I. I just.
Sorry, all in favor?
All aye, okay. Sorry, Claudia.
Without leap year, you're correct.
I was, okay. All right, well. I just wanted to see if you were paying attention tonight.
I am sure you did.
I clearly was not, but I thought I did.
Apparently, no, everybody was asleep at the wheel tonight, but that's okay. So Woodbury Senior Center, this is an added item on our agenda. This is, we discussed in the last meeting about accepting a negative declaration on the Seeker. So counsel did draft a neg, a neg deck for us.
Yes.
And I'm going to throw it into your court for now.
Well, I'm going to read every single, no, I'm not, actually. This is quite a long document, but I wanted to make sure that everything that the board reviewed and the applicant presented is covered in here. Additionally, as we talked about at the last meeting, there's certain, I'm going to call them mitigation measures, although they're really not, there are certain elements, practices that the applicant performs that really weren't included, so I wanted to mark them in here so that it was clear that these are requirements of the board, that the applicant is offering to do them. Those were what was in bold italics. The applicant confirmed that they are going to do those, those are part of their plans. I have a few modifications to the document. I've reviewed it with the applicant as well. I won't go through all of those, I'll just go through them somewhat more substantive ones.
I wanted you to read one every, line by line, word by word.
I have done that before, so don't tempt me.
No, I'm not going to tempt fate tonight.
So, but on the first page, I think one of the biggest changes was that I said that they're proposing a development of 43.82 acres. So what that's actually going to say is they're proposing the development of a 23.92 plus or minus acre portion of a 43.82 plus or minus acre tract of land. So they're only developing the 23 acres of the 43 total. That should have really been clarified, so it will be in the final version. The next one is also on page two. At the bottom of the paragraph, starting the majority of the project site is currently vacant uninhabited land. I said that there were contaminated soils on the site. That is my mistake, there are not. This is actually going to be a balanced site, so they won't be having the import and the export of fill. So that last sentence will say, additionally, the proposed earthwork has been designed so that the project is a balanced site, thereby eliminating the export or import of fill, removing the reference to any contamination. I want that to be.
So no fill in, no fill out. Everything they dig up is going to stay there.
Right. They're, they're still going to have to do a final grading plan, whatever, but from what they've done right now, they have confirmed that it's a balanced site.
Okay.
So I think they're going to try and stick with that.
Now, if that does, for whatever reason, change?
We'll have to take a look at it, see if there are any environmental impacts from it, there may not be. And you may just have, you know, an amended neg deck, or it may not even need to be that it may be something so minor that it might be able to be incorporated somehow in the resolution or as a field change.
Now, is there a threshold as far as what would make that change? You know, if they come, you know, if they say, I got to bring a yard of fill in, a yard is a yard of fill, but if I, they come in and say, I got to bring a hundred yards of fill in, or, or remove fifty yards of fill?
I would then defer to the village engineer as to what they would be comfortable with, because there's no set amount that I'm aware of that the DEC says, well, hold on this, you know, you need to revisit seeker for this.
Okay. And that's kind of self-policing, right? Almost, is?
Self-policing, but I think the applicant is aware that this was a concern. They obviously were paying attention because I put in contaminated soil and that was incorrect. I don't even know where that came from. But, so they're, they're aware that it should be a balanced site, they're aware they've got to prepare those plans. And if they don't balance, then we're going to hear from it from the engineer, and then it's going to have to be dealt with at site plan.
Okay.
But for right now, it's balanced. So that was corrected on page two. On page four, I had item eleven, which talked about slope stabilization, and then item, wait, yeah, eleven and then twelve Q are basically the same thing. So instead, I've decided to delete item eleven, which said slope stabilization matting will be installed to minimize erosion on the slopes and to improve the establishment of vegetation, and just rely on Q, which says all slopes of two-on-one or steeper will be stabilized with chute netting and hydroseed. They're very duplicative. Just scrolling down. And on page nine, right before the listing of mitigation measures, my thought apparently just trailed off and didn't actually conclude there, where it talked about that the project is going to be partially screened from the view of travelers on Route thirty-two by buildings, topography and vegetation, except from the south. So I've added, and I might tweak this a little bit, that any potential impact on visual resources that are visible from Route thirty-two or from the ridge preservation will not be significant, like I said. I, I need to tweak that a little bit because it's based on the measures that the applicant is incorporating, the landscaping, the colors, the light levels, things like that. I just haven't come up with, it's going to get to that gist, I'll say, I just want to tweak the, the verbiage. And that was it. The rest are like formatting. I don't know if the board had any questions or if you had any changes that?
Not questions per se to the, to the declaration, just as a project as a whole, being that it is being portrayed as senior housing, who enforces that it is?
So that's actually very interesting. So now that you conclude, if you adopt this, you conclude seeker, the applicant has to go back to the board of trustees. So right now, it's being proposed to be senior housing, but the senior housing overlay doesn't apply to the project site yet. So the board of trustees would have to adopt the law to apply that overlay to this. Then there's a lot of regulations in your code regarding senior housing, the rents and stuff like that, so it's all going to have to be looked at very carefully. It really hasn't been gone through in a very long time. I actually can't think of the last time.
Is there a time limit that it would be considered senior housing, where they could turn it?
No, and a lot of people think that because there's been some projects where somebody develops it thinking there's a real demand for senior housing, and then they go back and they say, wait, there's not, now can we just have apartments? The key is that if there isn't a demand, this is, a lot of these will be deed restricted, and there's other restrictions on the housing to keep it age restricted, with some very limited exceptions. So you saw that there is no impact on schools because there's not going to be any school age children. If there comes a time when there is a problem and that it can no longer be senior housing and there's just no market for it, everything is vacant, something like that, the applicant would need to come back to this board and would need to go back to the board of trustees as well. So, and I think that would be heavily monitored if all of a sudden the buses were stopping at the entrance.
Yeah, you think?
That would be a clue.
But yeah, that's, that's a big concern people have.
I can tell you in other jurisdictions, typically what happens is you submit a copy of the lease and it indicates the residence and the age.
Okay.
And it is, so senior housing, it's age restricted. So for example, I would have been eligible for it twenty years ago, which is about when we started proposing connection.
I, I can tell you that I tried to.
Come on, it's only been like six years.
Just out of curiosity, what age, what, what ages are we talking here? Fifty-five plus?
Fifty-five plus.
And, and I'll tell you that in, when I first moved to the area in a different municipality, there was a really nice development and it happened to be age restricted, and I was like, I'm really quiet, can't I just move in? And they would not let me move in because there were these restrictions, so.
So what about if you identify as a senior?
Yeah.
No, no, I'm sorry. What does your birth certificate say?
Most people don't.
I said I'd be the caretaker, I still got nothing.
I wonder if that would make a case, I identify as a senior.
Let's not give anybody any idea.
I have a, a question around SWIP, SWIP compliance.
Yes.
We've got a bunch of projects going on in Woodbury right now where it seems to be lacking. Not that it's going to happen with Mr. Lithgow's project, I'm sure he'll be all over it, but how do we ensure that the SWIP inspections are being done weekly and corrections are being made and the SWIP is being, being this does butt right up, not right up to, but you are in?
In that water.
That, you're in that water overlay.
Well, I think that's something that you'll have to deal with in the resolution to make sure that that's set, but it may also be something that the village board wants to consider in terms of a developers' agreement, having an inspection, an inspection escrow, make sure those things are actually being done, the reports are actually being provided. And usually, if you've seen those reports, it'll say silt fence is down at the bottom of whatever hill, and that that needs to be repaired. So those things can be worked out at that level.
So, can I clarify?
Go ahead.
The SWIP rig, the SWIP itself, oh, not the SWIP, the general permit requires that they be inspected, that corrective actions be identified if necessary, identified by the qualified inspector, and copies are typically provided to the stormwater management official in the municipality, so they're, they should be aware of it.
No, and I, I know what the permit says and I know what the, the, it says, but sometimes what permit says and what absence and actuality are two completely different things. And I'm not saying it's going to happen at your project, but we do have projects where we have problems with SWIP compliance here, and we want to, Bush's board wants to make sure, given the sensitivity of the back of the property, where I know no work is being done, but we want to make sure that SWIP is being adhered to correctly.
And it's going to be closely monitored by some of the residents who are concerned with that being along there, so it's something definitely to think about.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Motion helpers? All right. So I will offer a motion to accept the neg declaration, negative declaration with modifications read by council.
Thank you.
Second, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Could I also ask as lead agency that you inform the village board of your action tonight so that they?
Hey, Mr. Mayor, we approved the, the neg deck for the senior housing, so they're going to come to you next.
So they know they may move forward.
So informed.
Taking care of for you.
When I finalize the negative declaration, I will hopefully do that this week, I will.
Oh, come on, it was supposed to be funny.
It was funny.
Because the mayor said right there.
He's like, I can't hear. But just for all of the agencies, I will distribute it for seeker. So the record is clear.
Yes, we'll make sure it goes out officially in paper, that they're.
I appreciate that, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay.
It was funny.
I thought it was.
I, I just wanted to make sure it was clear.